Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting tonight, Thursday, September 11th, at 7:01 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence observance of September 11th. Thank you. Approval of agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Ms. Goldstein?
Second.
Second by Ms. Feather, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, 8/28/2025. Executive session meeting, 8/28/2025. Residency/truancy report, 9/4/2025. And enrollment report, 9/4/2025. School bus inspections, 8/21/2025. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Ms. Goldstein? Second by Ms. Shay, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Report of executive session meeting. No votes were taken. Report of executive session meeting on 9/11/2025. Vote to seal minutes of executive session. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session? Motion by Ms. Feather? Was it Ms. Shay? All right, Ms. Shay. Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes five to two with Mr. Bacon and Mr. Dean in the negative. Personnel announcements, there are no personnel announcements this evening. Superintendent's report, Dr. Thornton?
Evening, Madam Chair. First up, we have a shout out for NCMS. You may know the state has an initiative called Attendance Matters. It really looks at attendance in all the schools in Rhode Island. And they recently identified schools that had the best attendance rates or the lowest number of attendances. In the elementary level, as you know, there are five in each area. Just want to know. And the five listed in the Ls are Solans in Barrington, Trinity Academy in Providence, Hamden Meadows in Barrington, Naget in Barrington, Oakmont in Cranston. Middle School, Jamestown, Segway in Central Falls, Barrington Middle, Compass, and NCMS. So, good for us, right? High school, in case you're curious, for the high school, it was Green School in West Greenwich, East Greenwich High School, Barrington High School, North Smithfield High School, and Village Green. So, once again, just a great job for NCMS to be in that company. So, with that, I don't know, too, we have a guest tonight, Cindy Thorson, to talk about her program, the Cumberland School Volunteers. So, sorry, you're right, Cindy.
All right. Well, thank you for inviting me to address the school committee with an update from the Cumberland School Volunteers. This is my second year as the director. Very excited. Had a very busy August with all the back-to-school events and the meet-and-greets and trying to make a presence of the Cumberland School Volunteers to all the incoming parents and families. The Cumberland School Volunteers and the PTOs worked in tandem to announce the new process of getting BCI clearance that was instituted by the Cumberland Police Department this year. And so, it was really important for us to get the message out that if you wanted to do any kind of volunteering in the schools this year, you needed to sign up for your BCI clearance in September. And that's still ongoing. I can report that hundreds, hundreds of DCIs have been, pages have been coming in. I want to thank Carrie Smith and Heather Schaefer assisting me at the backpack event at Garvin because it was just, you know, over and over and over, just repeating ourselves to the parents, the importance of this signup. I also wanted to make a big shout out to the PTOs. They were super prepared at meet-and-greets with pre-printed BCI forms. And they were assisting the secretaries with making photocopies of people's IDs and collecting $5 and just getting the process to work really well. And then a super big shout out to the secretaries for their help in getting all this work processed. Cumberland Schools Volunteers Facebook is interfaced with all of the PTO's Facebooks this year. And so, anybody who wants to go on to their own school's PTO site can access information about their PTO activities, but also Cumberland School Volunteer activities. And what they will find on the Cumberland School Volunteer site is an online application now. So, we're not sending papers home, trying to get volunteers to send papers back. We've met the 21st century with QR code and everything. So, people are signing up and to date, 40 people have already signed up online to volunteer, either for general classroom help, or to work with the RIF program, or with the Just Friends program. And so, the process being streamlined and the urgency of getting BCI has just jump-started everything and it's great. So, we will be returning with the Just Friends program to our fourth grade classrooms this fall. We're working on making a schedule, but it looks like for the first week in October, we will be doing a blindness and deafness disability unit. And the third week of October, the physical and intellectual disability unit. And then the first week in November, learning disability unit, learning differences. And the first week of December, autism. So, we'll be in the schools for four continual weeks, four weeks with five schools in each week. So, if you're interested in volunteering, if anybody in the community is interested in volunteering, I'll be training you to present a scripted presentation to make to these kids. It's really easy to talk to fourth graders. And to run activities with veteran volunteers who have done the program before. So, it's just a really, really great way to be in the classroom. And then, of course, the RIF program, the Reading is Fundamental program, is returning this year. But I'm excited to announce that the Board of Directors has decided to expand the program. And so, now every school in the district will get, each of the elementary schools will get three distributions this year. And I'm really excited about that. But with the increase in student enrollment and then these extra distributions, we're looking at distributing about 6,800 books into the hands of kids in the school. And I'm really, really excited about that. I already have 1,900 in inventory in the office right now, so we're ready to get started. Volunteers are needed for that, to just help get the books displayed and help the kids select their books to take home. So, I'm really grateful for the grants, the donations, corporate business, personal donations, and contributions from the school department. Thank you. For, without this support, the Cumberland School Volunteers couldn't continue all these great initiatives. And I just want to continue to have a really important part of the community. Thank you.
Questions? Ms. Feather?
Oh, I just want to do a shout out for the just, more like than different. Because I did that program several times when I was just, you know, when my parents, when my kids were, when I was a parent of kids in elementary school. I can actually speak, really, I can. And my kids still talk about that program. And they are 22 and 18. Unfortunately, the 15-year-old probably doesn't, I don't think she had it. But there was, there were a few years where we didn't have it. But they still do talk about that program. It really meant a lot.
It's great to hear. I hear, I hear stories from, I have a friend who's a bus driver, and stories about kids who are correcting kids on the bus and saying, "That's not the right way to say that." And it's just great. It is, it's, I have kids that are older now, too, and they remember doing it, too. So, thanks.
Well, thank you for all you do, we truly appreciate it.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
And last but not least, let's talk about construction. So, at the trans, our new doors did come in. So, you can see the old ones on the left, new ones on the right. One door's installed. We'll take down the top piece, the trans, and they're going to color-match that and make it the lighter kind of blonde color. So, that's in process. That's going to be both floors of the trans. Here, the Ashton Playground is getting very close. Also with Ashton, with Ashton, Garvin, and Compton Hill, we have fencing going in as well. And that's in process, but that's very close now over at Ashton. And BF Norton, as you know, we had a groundbreaking the other day, and it really is all about dirt right now at BF Norton, all kinds of dirt and dirt activities. So, if I can kind of orient you here, this is the start of the Loop Road. That's going to be going around the building. That's the Loop Road looking towards Forest Avenue. So, it's going to be roughly, probably a little under a quarter mile going around the entire outside of the area, probably ready, probably Thanksgiving, Christmas for the Loop Road. That's underway. Also, with this, the dirt, I'm learning all kinds of things that I'm sure Andrew knows. Actually, before I go any further, Andrew has something we want to...
Madam Chair, members of the committee, due to my employment with a geotechnical construction company that is going to be performing ground improvement portion of the BF Norton project, I'll be recusing myself from any discussions relating to this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have learned a lot about just the soils. There's something they're doing called compaction testing. They compact the dirt and see if it's suitable to put heavier things on top of it. If it's not, that's when we hire companies to do things under the ground, which we're doing at this site as well. Here, you can see the sheer size of some of the equipment. It's quite impressive. These are large, larger vehicles on site. Over here, this, as you go into BF, and you're in the front by the driveway, looking straight back, that's the back-left corner, the south side, that's going to come up eight feet. The road is going to be where these flags are. It's just coming, the school, actually, our property line is up here past the fence. So, we're going to have a retaining wall around here and a road going that way. Over here, just looking back towards what was, I think, home plate. There's a term they use called native soils. That's a pile of dirt. The dirt came from BF. It's native. We can reuse, it was tested, it can all be reused, which is good. We have to bring in more soil to raise the whole footprint of this site up to Broad Street level. So, it's quite a lot of soil coming in. On the right, really can't see closely yet, they're digging a large pit here, it's going to go six feet further down. That's going to be like a stormwater retention area. So, picture these large, no, large, large tubes going in the ground to retain the water, and then it'll leach in through the sand. That's going to go in. Also, we have something called an easement. An easement is a right-of-way we have, actually, that's a good slide right there on my back. The easement is over here, one of the properties is a rental property, we have owner's permission. We actually can connect our lines to Forest Avenue and avoid having a pumping station to pump things up and onto Broad Street. So, it's a big win to get the easement. So, that's in process happening, I think, in October, November. The last thing we have is a brief video before I do it. So, when the soil needs support underneath it, I've learned, we put in something called rammed aggregate piers. And this very short video shows you what it is. And I think at a future meeting, we'll probably have folks from Keller come out and show us what it is, but it's really a big deal for our site, so. It's only a minute. So, essentially, you can see, for the building, they have to put in several of these underground support structures to keep the building up. So, they take the material or the aggregate and they dump it in this machine. Aggregate goes down into a hole that's been bored out. And then they release the aggregate and then they compress it down. And they keep doing that and each one's a pier. And they make several of those around the entire footprint of our project. So, that's, that's what they'll be doing probably, I believe, in October. So, all in all, it really is about the site, the dirt. It's all moving along. Last thing we have, our GMP, our Guaranteed Maximum Price, due tomorrow. So, that's when we get our final budgeting underway. So, that's tomorrow as well. So, happy to answer any questions. And we don't have to finish the video, Mike, that's fine, they get the idea. That's what I have right now.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Okay, on to reports of standing committees. Fiscal Management Subcommittee update, Ms. Smith?
The Fiscal Subcommittee did meet earlier this evening. We do have payment of the bills and also we have 11 resolutions that will be discussed a little bit later.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Policy and Procedure Subcommittee update, Ms. Feather?
Policy and Procedures did not meet, but we're looking to have our next meeting, hopefully, hopefully, October. I was going to say hopefully before October, but it's probably October.
Thank you. Achievement and Communication Subcommittee, our next meeting is the 18th of September at 4:30 PM. And District Health and Wellness Subcommittee, Ms. Shay?
We have our first meeting scheduled for October 9th.
Thank you very much. Comments from the public, are there any comments from the public? Okay. New business, we're going to table this item? The discussion or vote to approve agreement to hold harmless Blackstone River there for use of parking spaces at 549 Broad Street?
Yes, please.
That item is tabled. B, discussion and/or vote to approve agreement to hold harmless Consigli Construction, Inc., for use of temporary outdoor recess space at BF Norton?
So, I can start and Mr. Adams can probably finish. As you know, we have a temporary playground over at BF, the side parking lot. Looking to expand it a little bit in like a horseshoe on both sides to get all the kids outside playing every day. And we have a way to do that, but we had to, you know, talk to Consigli, also talk to Mr. Adams, make sure we have it all done correctly. So, Mr. Adams has a slight clarification on the picture.
However, I gather that the folks at BF wanted to expand the area in which kids could play, notwithstanding that there's a construction project going on at the site. And so, that wasn't part of the Consigli deal. In other words, they have a contract that doesn't include areas that I think Dr. Thornton, the principal at BF, and the kids would like to also play in. So, most of the area is already covered by their contract, but there is a small portion that wants, that they want to, that the school department people want to add so the kids can still play in a larger area. And Consigli said, "Well, that's great, but we aren't on the hook to do that and we don't want to be on the hook." What do I mean by that? If we want to expand the area that we're going to have kids play, the expanded area, Consigli said, "Well, if something bad happens to a kid, kid gets hurt, these things can happen," Consigli typically would have to deal with that as their problem. But they said, I think correctly, "You guys want this new thing that wasn't part of our deal. If something happens in that area, you should indemnify Consigli." The "you" being "us." There's insurance for this, that's why you guys have all this. And so, they sent over a indemnity agreement that didn't actually say what I thought it would say. It kind of said that we indemnify them for everything. And so, I said, "Well, that seems weird, let me go take a look at the property." And so, we, I edited the language. If everybody can see this, this is BF. The area that we're talking about for the most part is just a little bit of land, a little grass, very small. The parking lot's already, parking lot's already an area that is being handled. It's already, it's already something to deal with. What we're talking about in the agreement is literally this bit of land, and there's another spit of land, that. The language in the contract is, fuck, I edited it to make it clearer. The photograph that was sent, which we also wanted to have it, the photograph, would you guys have it? Yeah. See how the photograph that Ms. Goldstein is holding, that long rectangle? It's old, no, yeah, that long red hatched rectangle? That's not the spit of land because it only, what we want is it only go halfway.
If I could add also...
So, it's anal retentive lawyer stuff, but my suggestion is that you guys, as far as an agreement to indemnify, the general concept of indemnity, you can approve this agreement subject to that photograph being fixed, so that that little red hatched area only goes halfway.
You know, so if I could add, yes. Yeah. Yeah. Should you approve this? Yeah. Right.
I guess that's the main entrance.
I think Dr. Thornton's going to clarify location.
Just to clarify, so it's the Patrick Grass going towards Forest Avenue before the sign. And if you approve it, it'll be the same tall fence with scrim on it going around the entire... Yeah, but the current rectangle is approved as a playground. The playground's now a horseshoe instead of a, just a rectangle. Back, same thing, a little bit in the back as well. So, same idea.
There is already an existing playground that is not part of this, that there already exists and Consigli's on the hook for. We're talking about having the district being on the hook if the kid is hurt in this area, this little spit of land.
So, I just have a quick question. The playground that Consigli's on the hook for, I'm sorry. Where is that exactly located to BF Norton's footprint right now?
It is in the northern, it is on the north side.
It's on Broad Street? It's on the side.
Well, Broad Street is east of it. There's a...
So, my question is, that grass area is closer to Broad Street, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, it's right adjacent to Broad Street.
Safety's always my number one. If you have a child that elopes, what are we doing to, like, does Consigli, are they not doing this because we didn't put it in originally? Or do they see safety issues as well?
Not part of their original contract.
Okay.
Not part of their responsibility, so they're taking on more of a burden than they are otherwise obligated to do, which is, from their perspective, not fair.
Got it.
I don't think there's more...
I would just be more concerned being that close to Broad Street and if it, like, what is...
Right now, the current original rectangle parking lot is also adjacent to Broad Street. We put in new gates on it. We have five staff members on duty, so we have five adults on that location. We're trying to add the Patrick Grass with the same six-foot fence with scrim on it to give a little more real estate so we can get more kids outside.
So, there will be a fence? Okay.
It's a six-foot fence with that orange material, it's called scrim, it kind of shades the whole fence.
Yeah. Mr. Bacon, then Ms. Goldstein. I'm sorry, Mr. Bacon.
So, are they trying to waive any insurance of if a child gets hit at all in the playground?
So, the way the law works is as follows. If someone is injured in an accident, their lawyer brings everyone to the party. Okay? In this case, that party, I hate to say this, forgive me for speaking this way, because we could be talking about somebody who's injured, it could be, not necessarily even a kid, it could be an adult. But what happens is, the lawyer representing that injured person would sue the school department, would sue Consigli, would sue any other vendor that was anywhere close and had some responsibility of some kind at all for the property. So, everybody gets sued. The question is, who pays if that injured person succeeds in their case and wins? Do they all pay, or do just some of them pay? An indemnity agreement, which is what this is, would require the school department to pay if the injury occurs in this area. That's it. And the reason Consigli is asking for this, I think it's reasonable, but ultimately, it's up to you guys, I mean, whether you want to do this at all. The reason the school department wants this is because they want a larger area for kids to have recess. The gist of it is, is Consigli is saying, "Our job wasn't to make this little area here into a playground and that's more than we bargained for." Does that make sense?
It does, yeah.
Okay.
I could expand a little more. As the school year opened, the principal realized with the original rectangle, I'll call it, she only felt comfortable having some kids outside and someone have indoor recess and it'd be rotating basis. That's a long time to rotate in and out for a year and a half. I sent Mr. Demondon, their former principal of BF, to examine it with the principal, and they came up with this horseshoe concept to get all the kids outside.
Mr. Bacon?
For the sake of safety, having that much real estate on Broad Street, I don't think a fence is enough. There should be, I know them as mafia blocks, but like the concrete barriers that you see in the middle of the highway to divide the highway, because heaven forbid there is an accident on Broad Street, or if a car goes off of the road, they're going to go right through that fence and into the playground area. So, I think there should be a second form of safety.
In front or in back of the fence?
On the front side, on the, like, on the roadside. Closer to the street and then all that they're going to have is a fence on the inside. I know there's a curb, but I think there should be something high, like I'm saying. It's like a three-foot or like a three-foot-high concrete barrier, like you see going, if you're driving down 146, you could see that separating the highways, north and southbound.
Like a Jersey barrier?
Correct, a Jersey barrier, yep. It's a recommendation, I mean, whatever is decided, I think there should be some, a different fort, a different form of safety, an additional form of safety, I guess I should say.
Listen, I, I think there is a desire by the administrative team, particularly the folks at BF, to move this along, but that's fine. They don't have it right now, so they may want it moved along quickly, but if there's reservations like the one that you're expressing, maybe there's a need for an additional meeting with Consigli to see if there's a way to satisfy those concerns. You know, all I was asked to do was like, "We want this area added, add it." So, I did. And then the picture didn't actually do what the language that I added do. But if there are concerns like what Mr. Bacon is expressing, we can go back to, I think these folks can go back to Consigli and say, "Hey, what can we do here?" Any other thoughts would be helpful if you have them now. If you don't, you don't. But any other thoughts in that regard, like Mr. Bacon's?
So, Ms. Shay, I think, had a...
Line of BF Norton, which would go, if you're looking at the building, to the right, which is now where the staff parking lot is or was, right. is or was, right? And they would be able to play on that grass. Is that what we're saying? I have two issues or concerns about that is kind of going off of what Mr. Bacon is saying. If that fence is going to be on the grass side, that would be our property, correct? If it's before the lip, which is where the sidewalk is, wouldn't that be state property? Because that's it was part of the state renovation project for the sidewalk renovations. So I just want to know like if the fence would go there because I would imagine that would take up inches off of that already small area.
You're right. I don't think we can put the fence on the sidewalk, right? It has to be on our grass.
Correct. And then also too, I think I'm just concerned as well as the classrooms that are level to that grass, that would be an interruption to those kids that are in grades K and one. So I just want to ensure that we also are keeping that in mind as well.
Ms. Smith? We all.
If if you you want, we could we could table this and bring the principal back with Consigli, if you'd like.
I think Ms. Smith and Ms. Feather want to speak and then yes.
Right. Ms. Smith and Ms. Feather.
I actually was going to say exactly what Mr. Shea had said as well on the disruption to those classrooms that are there. And then also fencing would have to be on the lawns because you're going to not just the state with the sidewalk, but you have ADA compliance on those sidewalks. And we're not going to be able to interfere with that ADA compliance. Those fencing and the posts and the way that they are, they have legs that come out. So it becomes a tripping hazard for the children because they're not just stuck in the ground. They're temporary fencing for a reason and their balance is with the legs on it. So I definitely would want to understand how they would do a fencing to not have that tripping hazard in there as well. And then whether or not a secondary one has to be put or a blockage has to be put up just for the lunchtime in front of those other windows so that it's not a deterrent. You're talking about kindergartners in first graders. It will deter them from from learning. It will impact their day.
Ms. Feather? So my question was just going to ask about a clarification. You said it was the orange um fencing. Is that the plastic fencing or is that metal?
It's metal fencing with orange scrim or this material. It's plasticky material wrapped on the metal fence.
Wrapped on the metal fence. Okay. I was very nervous for a second that it was just like the landscape fencing. But I too, I I'm I'm very nervous about the kids being in front of Broad Street as well, so.
Is if you want, I guess two thoughts, we can certainly table, bring back and sit in the principal. The principal's main challenge is, you know, for a year and a half, it's a long time to have kids inside every other day. So is there anything we can do to make it safe enough to give them the space? But I can certainly bring them back.
Uh, Mr. Bacon?
So just one thing to answer, I think there was Ms. Smith's uh, question about the fence with the legs. She's 100% correct. However, they do have the Jersey barrier style that I'm I'm referring to. It's a three foot high and then the fence goes into the Jersey barrier. That's another three foot section with the scrim that Dr. Thornton is referring to. So you'd kind of be killing, excuse me for using this terminology, you're killing two birds with one stone, so to say.
I'm sorry, Ms. Shea? Um, if we chose not to go this route, would it be an option to extend, I guess, that place space behind the building where it currently routes around?
In this model, we're doing that a little bit, maybe, I don't know, 10, 15 feet. Past that, you really can't go further.
Up until where the cafeteria door is at?
No, that's a big downhill and we have some transformer items there. We want to want to go near the transformer, but it's before there. There's like, as you round the corner, just maybe 15 feet or so after that, we didn't feel we could go further.
Thank you.
Also, I know we also looked at, could we hire more staff and have more recess during the day? Principal said no, because now kids are in intervention blocks, things like that. So we can't extend the recess block. It's really a real estate challenge.
Um, so the pleasure of the committee is to table. Be. Oops. We'll table that as well, please. Uh, see discussion in our vote to approve homeschool instruction request for 25, 26 school year. Do I have a motion to approve homeschool instruction requests?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Ms. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes seven to zero. Vote to authorize the chair to enter into the into contract negotiations with the superintendent subject to ratification of the contract by a subsequent vote of the committee. Pleasure of the committee?
I'd like to motion to um, all of that.
Okay, motion by Ms. Feather. Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion in our vote to approve the transportation efficiency study proposal and resolution SC dash PR dash O eight dash 2025 dash 110. Transportation Efficiency Study Transpar Group. Dr. Thornton?
It's not your last meeting. We put this onto this meeting. We had some folks from Transpar on a Zoom, so Mike, we can enlarge that and we can um answer questions as they come up. Just to reset, set the table. The committee previously approved the original concept, the $14,000 expense for the the inter-district and in-district efficiencies and how big our fleet is, how efficient are we? We had asked the Transpar folks to consider um more work, that being, you know, boundaries, especially in FY27, once the new BF is online and also start times, right? That whole question we have. So with that, we put it on tonight and I'm not sure we have for Transpar tonight. Mike? Hello?
Hi, my name is Nicole Martin. I'm from Transpar Group.
Can you try it again? Hi.
Hi, my name is Nicole Martin. I'm from Transpar Group. Can you hear me?
No, can't hear you just yet.
Okay, I'll keep trying. Let me know if you can hear me at all.
Hang on one sec. We're trying on our end to get the sound on.
Can you hear me now? Is that any better? Hello?
Still trying. Give us a sec. Not yet. How about now?
Hello, can you hear me now?
No, not yet.
Remember those days?
Okay.
This.
Yeah. You know.
And you still can't hear me?
Yes.
Ah. I was about to log out and try and log back in. So I I will try an introduction again. Um, can you still hear me? Perfect. So hi, my name is Nicole Martin. Um, I work for Transpar Group.
You loser?
Yeah. We lost you, sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, there she is.
You're back.
Hi.
Hang on one sec. We're going to amplify you, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, the Zoom days.
You hear me?
I can, yes.
But I can't hear you.
Can you hear us?
I can. I can hear you all very, very clear.
Oh, come on.
It's not my responsibility to do the technology.
Find another one. Need to get an input. Hold on one sec. I want you to get a squeak. Go ahead.
Hello?
All right.
All right.
Go ahead.
Okay, so hi, um, my name is Nicole Martin. I'm um here um from Transpar Group to um answer any questions you may have.
On Nicole, I know there was um some question from from some folks around just the um the pricing and uh, you know, we did this knowing that already ride already bid out the base concept. So I guess there were some questions over the pricing versus if we were to go out to bid and how would that work versus going with you folks now?
Sure. And so um as far as additional costs, there are will be no additional costs for the services that are outlined in our our proposals. So um that um expense that that was quoted, um there there's nothing additional.
I guess the question is, um, there was some question, maybe you're doing it next year. And I think I spoke to Patrick, was it last week? And there was some question over the base study you're doing now. If we went out to bid, would we in fact have to have to do that again?
Sure. So um a- as far as the um work that is, you know, currently included, um so the way I understood the question was um in reference to that the routing for the summer of 2027 when you expect the um redistricting work and the new buildings and everything to be completed. Um, and so um, you know, uh, our recommendation is that, you know, you at the district level would need to determine um whether you would like you know, us at Transpar to review review that additional work. Um, once it is time for those routes to be built um and that work to be done um closer to the summer of 2027.
The votes in redistricting be done earlier than that if it's supposed to happen for 12 of 27?
Yeah, I I mean, there's no time like the present. Um, and so we we do not, um, it ultimately it's your decision. But um, we do not um find any reason to delay um the start of this work.
I remember in the past, some of our folks had said that this earlier, get in front of it. Um, so if we were to say yes tonight, given ballpark, how many months of work it is before you have an idea of what we look like?
So that would be a question that I could definitely um take back to the team um and and request and and get an answer for you as soon as tomorrow. Um, but exactly, um, you know, it the the timeline that um the the team has set up, um, I'm not unfortunately um fully aware of that. And so I would have to get that um information for you, but I could have it for you as as early as tomorrow.
What other districts have you done redistricting investment routes for? Would have been the successes with it? And can you just give us a little history of your experience with redistricting blessing?
Absolutely. So our our company has um done redistricting um all over the country. Um, our most recent um is um work that we're starting to do with the city of One Socket. Um, we just completed phase one of that work. Um, we were um successful in in going through a um route yield efficiency study. Um, as part of that study, um, we were able to find, you know, um low hanging fruit, um immediate changes that we were able to um provide and recommend to One Socket um that they could have implemented as soon as, you know, the start of the 25, 26 school year.
I guess my question is, how would the data be analyzed? Is it via software, GPS, ridership uh, constant by survey? How is that?
Sure. And so um, there's different methods. Um, route yield is a um a product that in a process that is um unique to Transpar Group. Um, that's only one um method. Um, bell time studies, um software's uh that we could, um, I could get and provide to you um from the team um exactly um what goes into and all of the steps that are taken in addition to um doing the route yields you doing and and route yield um looks at bell times. It it looks at your um uh gaps and and analysis. It looks at, you know, the number of bus routes, the number of students in your bus. So um route yield in and of itself is a multi-layered approach that um takes in all of the data about your transportation system. Um, and so um again, um, I can bring all of um this specific um request back to them and and I can make sure that um my team gets a concise answer for you um by tomorrow.
Does the data also that's going to be collected, does that include also like fuel cost and maintenance as well?
It does. It it will um include your current contracts, um so fuel, um rates, um, any other things that go into cost from a vendor um expectation, um things like um purchasing of your buses in your contract. You could have um fleet um age and mileage requirements, which will, you know, impact what the costs are. You'll have rate increases over the cost of um of of the the years of the contract. All of that will be analyzed fully. Yes.
You approved phase one originally, or if we approved to have the, what I thought was the route yield completed for the bells and understanding the bell time stand whether or not we could find efficiencies there. So that part has been approved already. So the route yields, they're included with that first quote that we've already approved. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the 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 initial study is to look at what your current routing structure and transportation program looks like. Um, and route yields will be that tool that will be utilized to do that. Um, and that is that 14,000 that's included in um with the other districts. You're looking at the boundaries, looking at deeper, um, you know, redistricting. That's where um the additional expense and um it would segue from that original project.
I guess you could say boots on the ground here and reviewing it in Cumberland and having people here to work it, or is it all done uh through communication and IT?
No, um, the um, even the initial um project, um, which is that 14,000 um route yields needs to have people in Rhode Island, boots on the ground in Cumberland. They come out, um, we physically observe the routes. We see and observe in person the loading time, the unloading time that happens with the buses at the school because that plays a role in it. The traffic patterns from the parents' drop off loading area um compared to the buses loading area, the traffic in the community as the buses come in and exit. the traffic in the community as the buses come in and exit. We will be looking at the, the traffic patterns at the local bus yard area as well. All of those play factors into timing efficiencies, bell times. The only way to do that is in person, and yes, we would be here in Rhode Island.
What are the safeguards that are in place for hazardous, hazardous walking zones?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I heard walking zones, but the rest was breaking up.
What are the safeguards that are in place for those walking zones?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not catching what you're saying.
The safeguards to the walking zones.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, and what about those, please?
I guess my question is just, what are the safeguards that are in place for those? I guess like when you're talking about boots on the ground, is that gonna be evaluated as well?
So if you do have current walk distance for your students where they do not qualify for transportation, those will be assessed. If you're looking to, you know, one of the suggestions would be for efficiencies to expand those walk distances because, you know, the, the project finds that compared to other districts in your area, you know, your walk distances are restrictive. That could be a suggestion, but no suggestion or at any point in time if there is inefficiency or a service delivery improvement that does not work for you, then those changes and, you know, tweaks could be had. We don't expect, you know, our first scenario to be the only scenario. Typically, it's, you know, two to three scenarios are provided and then we adjust to what the clients' needs are based on their feedback.
Getting here earlier, is if we have a walking zone on a street, does Transpar deem the street walkable or not? Are police, we have a protocol, we go through this row, you cannot walk on this one, it's okay to walk on. Do you guys do that iteration?
So that, that would be a collaborative work that we would need to take up with the district. You would need to give us those qualifications. And then if you wanted us to, you know, look at, or we found that those parameters that you provided us are prohibitive in nature to efficiencies, we could make suggestions to you to make alterations, but we would follow, you know, whatever guidance and, and procedures and guidelines for transportation that you have in place as a district.
You had said that, or in the, in the proposal, it does say that there are up to three resuming and walk zone scenarios included within this package. On average, what, how many scenarios does it typically take a, a district that you've worked with to land on something that, that they adopt into their, into their district, into their busing plan?
Sure, and, and so we do find that two, two, three is usually efficient, is effective enough for districts to find, you know, a path forward. That is why we use that when we put in our, we put that in our proposals. And so, you know, again, with all of our suggestions, we're looking for client engagement, client feedback. And so we, you know, we accept and, and enjoy that collaborative efforts because I think it's very important, Transpar feels it's very important that with suggestion comes, you know, collaboration. And so you will always find that even if you like three quarters of one of the scenarios, but you find, you know, a portion of it to, to not be palatable, then, you know, we will work to make it that way. There are times where we've had, you know, portions of two different scenarios meshed together to create that third scenario. We are very flexible and we work and tailor all of our projects to our, our clients' needs.
So in your proposal, when, it doesn't really state when exactly this work would be performed. Would it be performed in the 26, 27 school year?
So that would be, you know, based on your timeline for, for completion. So again, if we were moving forward to rolling this out for 2027, some of this work would start immediately as part of your first review. And then the work would just continue from there because this initial route yield is, you know, the stepping stones and the building blocks of the future stages that need to take place. And so as soon as we would receive the approval, we would, you know, start the route yields and then move right into those natural steps. And once we are engaged, there would be a timeline provided to you and spelled out so that you knew exactly, you know, when, where, and, and what, you know, the next steps would be all along the way.
Done, completion of both phase one and phase, I'm sorry, phase, uh, phase two would be completed, correct?
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I, the first part of that sentence cut out again.
The payment for the proposal for phase two would be issued upon completion of said phase two, correct?
Yes.
The study also would include just both regular education and special education, correct?
Yes, it would be inclusive of any students that require transportation for your district.
Also, I think you mentioned this, um, we may be a little unique. We have two tiers in our elementary school and sometimes have been a focus of, of the town. Is that part of your analysis as well?
Yes, um, that's one of the things that we excel at is looking at a tiered system and finding routing efficiencies by changing bell times, setting up school bell time structures so that they're conducive of utilizing a vehicle to the, you know, optimal resource that it can be. We would want the lowest number of routes that could successfully service, you know, all of the students attending your school and requiring busing.
Thank you for your explanation and level of expertise this evening.
Absolutely.
Something that does this all the time is refreshing because you know the expectations and you've done it one to 100 million times that you know what you're doing. So I do appreciate that, thank you very much.
You're welcome, it was my pleasure. Thank you for having me.
All right, so discussion or vote? Dash PR dash O eight dash 2025 dash 110, transportation efficiency study, Transpar Group. Pleasure of the committee. Discussion, Ms. Smith.
I agree that we need to have a study done. The first phase, we, we talked about, we've already approved that and the information that's provided for that first phase really does align quite nicely to what we had discussed and what we voted on. So having it written out in more detail is nice. However, we are looking at a study that really cannot be studied yet for the 2027 school year. I, I think that there's a lot of discussions that we as a school committee need to have first about the study and really in planning on that, we continue to see our class sizes increase. We continue to see our enrollment go up. I think the number I heard last was 125 new students again this year. We're, we're not seeing a slowdown on that happening. And on top of that, we are looking at a planning board who has a lot of big projects out in front of them. And regardless if they think that one to five children are going to come from two hundred apartments, we know from our experience with Cumberland Crossing, that just isn't an accurate statement. We are going to expect and we have to plan for the worst in how we're looking at this. I think, you know, we're, we're building our last school now and we're gonna have it ready for 2027. And everybody, we're all excited about it. I'm definitely concerned that we're not looking at a five-year plan, 10-year plan here. By the time 2027 rolls around, we could be out of space already. And we have to, as a committee, be prudent in our discussions and our planning and take the right steps in the right way. To approve the second phase of this now and what's been put forward, I think is a little premature. I personally feel that we as a school committee really should have some open dialogue and discussion, maybe even some peer groups, parent collective things. We saw that when we redistricted in 2012, was it? When we did the very large study, the, the feedback, I, I think we have great lessons learned there and making sure that we have discussions. And on top of that, we have a budget that we're using already. We're using fund balance. It's not been a good year for our budget and I'm not sure next year is gonna be any different. I just am not comfortable with approving whether that gets paid in March, whether that gets paid in December. That's not the concern. I don't feel comfortable approving use of fund balance this early into our budget year. We need to see numbers, we need to see what's happening, we need to see where the budget's going. And we need to plan around that before we're using more fund balance to do this study. So personally, while I think Transpar has a great plan put together for us, I personally could not support going into a second phase and looking at the 79,000 and approaching it now with so many unknowns still out there for us as a school committee.
Thank you, anyone else? Just one.
I think to me, there are always unknowns with this type of stuff, but I think to me, getting in front of it is, I think, gives us more of a chance to kind of react. In terms of the budget here, next year's a 4% increase for the union, so that's not any better. I think it really is a math problem, as Carrie said, with more kids coming in. But I think to wait would make, it's, it's problematic to wait. I think you do it now and get in front of it.
I agree, I think right now we have experts that can do this work for us. And I do remember going through redistricting and getting a lot of information that I was not knowledgeable enough to make decisions that I feel when you have someone that does this nationally, they have that knowledge and expertise that I, I just don't have a wheelhouse or understanding of. So I have to appreciate them. Plus, it sounded, if I'm hearing correctly, that as different scenarios arise, they adjust accordingly to meet those scenarios for increase of enrollment. If anything, if I'm hearing correctly, if things have changed, they then put that information into their report and their, their appraisal of the whole situation to find out how to adjust accordingly, is that correct?
Sorry, I was on mute again. That is correct, because as your system changes, we will adjust our data accordingly. We will be in constant communication with our client to ensure that the latest, you know, student enrollment data, demographics. You could have an increase in special education one year, you could have an increase, you know, of matriciation from elementary into middle school that needs to be accounted for when you're redistricting and changing your grade levels at schools, if that's one of your intentions. All of those are considerations and yes, we always need to be prepared, to be flexible, to, to account for those changes that will happen over time when you do a large study like this.
Putting the expectation on the element team. It's a huge, again, I witnessed it this last half, it's a huge undertaking for the administration and it's a huge capacity issue for them. They do so much work, so many days. Adding redistricting on for this expansion, to me, it's just, it's a heavy lift. And if we can reduce those heavy lifts and we have someone that has the expertise, I do support a study and going forward with something like this. Ms. Smith and Ms. Goldstein?
I want to be clear, I support a study. I just don't think that right now is the time that we should be voting on this or looking at it or planning. I think we should have more discussions. You know, by the time March comes around, our enrollment will numbers, we'll have a better understanding of our enrollment numbers for the 2026 year, which could help us in our planning because enrollment, you know, as we know, we open the, the window in March or February. We'll have more information available to us to perhaps look at that time. We're also gonna have a lot more of the fiscal understanding occurring to see exactly what we're using from fund balance, where we could potentially save and how we can, you know, tweak some of that funds. So, well, I agree, I don't want the administration taking this on. I sat on one of those subcommittees, I worked with them, I know how much work goes into it. I do think that we absolutely need a study. I personally just don't think this is the time to be voting on it or having that study approved just yet.
Ms. Goldstein, then Ms. Sutter?
Thank you, so I, I, I agree that I think that there needs to be a study. I appreciate the expertise with which Transpar comes to the table. And I also appreciate Ms. Smith's concerns. And I think that vote, voting for, whether we decide to vote for this tonight, I think that the clock starts ticking and thinking about how to get all of that information from all of the stakeholders, whether, whether it's administration, us here, the community, parents, and being able to get that information, as much information as possible. I know I certainly have ideas on bell times and particularly for the elementary schools and the high school that I would want that information, as much information as possible, to be given to Transpar as quickly as possible. So because I would want to maximize those three scenarios and not have us in a situation where we then have more information that moves us into more scenarios, which equals more money put out there. So I think once, if we were to, I would, I would want that information as well. I think it would be, if we voted to approve this, it would be, I'm gonna pronounce two, we will very quickly to try to get that information from all of the stakeholders as soon as possible. Thank you.
Ms. Sutter, then Ms. Shane?
What was the cost again? I think about 73,000. 10,000, okay. And when we were trying to change the bell times, when we were trying to make sure that the students were getting out of school at, at the times that we were, that, you know, that, that they should be getting out of school and getting home at the times that they should be. I think part of our issue was that we started that conversation way too late. And part of what we discussed was how we should start that conversation right away in September. And my understanding is that the information, look, you read with the budget. My understanding is that the information, you know, that, that, and again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sorry. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that when you give us recommendations, it would also include, hey, if your numbers go up by 10 or if your numbers go down by 10 or whatever, here are some different ideas for you to try. Is that?
Yes, yes. Our, 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 our feedback and, and all of our scenarios will include, projections out based on what you've seen historically, you know? And if you are now seeing in the, in the city of Cumberland, town of Cumberland rather, larger spikes in your enrollment, we will adjust for that, right? And then if we get to that last phase and it's now time for the route planning and route review and, and the study of those, you know, prepared routes to make sure they're efficient and you don't see that planned spike, then we would adjust accordingly then. And that would be our suggestion to you in the moment. You know, we have to have that full flexibility in our scenarios and in our process to account for the hypothetical, but then adjust to the, to the actuals as we get closer, yes. but then adjust to the, to the actuals as we get closer. Yes.
And I'm anticipating that the, you'll hear us refer to different things like the in and hope complex. That's something that they're talking about residential. You know, something that's in play by the town would be some data point that you would take into account.
Absolutely. And those would be all part of the initial phases of route yields, right? The initial phases of these projects, this is part of the data collection. We would be leaning on all stakeholders within Cumberland's town that could feed us that information and and those statistics so that we can make sure it's embedded in everything that we do. Absolutely.
Never will have the right time. It's kind of like having a baby. There's never a right time to have a baby. So you just do it and you, and you hope that everything works out. So that's my.
Ms. Shay, then Ms. Smith? Are there any kind of federal grants or anything that would maybe help offset the price of the 79,000?
So myself personally, I'm not aware of any grants that are available to help with transportation studies or redistricting. I can take that question back to my team and ask if they're aware of any. And I could also reach out to Mario Correño at the Rhode Island Department of VED. The initial collaboration that you're already involved in is, you know, that what I know to be Rhode Island's initial, you know, approach to looking at transportation as a whole to find cost efficiencies for every city and town in the state. And so, you know, I'm, I do not believe there are, there are any, but I will certainly ask that and provided if there is.
I don't know if anybody in the audience or people at home will, is, we've already approved phase one. Phase one does, does do this analysis, does do the routes, everything related to the bell time. So we're not, we're not going to be going into a bell time in in getting something in the last minute. This is, this study has already been approved and that is going to be done. The second phase of it is, is where it's the 2027, 2028 school year. So that's, that's all. It's just, that's where my concern is, is let's wait to get this first phase done. Let's see how the analysis goes. Let's talk about it as a committee and let's make sure that we're going to know what those questions are, where they're going to be, how we want to approach it so that we can then worry about getting into another phase and more cost.
Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Rata.
Good evening, everyone. Just add a little bit of flavor of logistics to this. Since the state went out to bid for the phase one, phase two pieces here, any, if you do not approve going with Transpar in phase two, and then we're forced to go out to bid because the state contract or whatever negotiation they had expires, you're guaranteeing yourself an increased cost because you're going to have to do phase one over again. We also have to research putting out the RFP and that's all going to probably take six months or so, you know, just to kind of get that RFP out, then we have to bring it to you guys. So you're probably chewing, chewing up six months, guaranteeing costing yourself an extra 15 to 20,000 because you're going to have to start over phase one with whatever new company might, that might win the bid. So there's, there's time, that timing issue of it, we're getting a really good price as connecting to the state RFP as part of this process. And if if the final bill is actually does end up being due in fiscal '26, '27, we can just, that, we would include that in next year's budget. The reason we're thinking it would be fund balance right now is because the timing of when this lands, it's kind of, kind of in flux depending on when their reports published. So that's why we kind of indicate now that it would be fund balance use because it's not in your current budget. But if it does end up being part of '26, '27, when that bill is due, we would make it part of that budget. Also, to that point, we normally amend the budget in the October, November timeframe. So if it was included in this part, in this fiscal year, we would just include that. But seeing as it does indicate that Transpar would be publishing the report in the '26, '27 budget year, it would probably hit that budget and not, not this current.
Thank you, Mr. Rata. Ms. Smith?
Mr. Rata, I, I believe when Mario was here, he said that this is, this is new for Ride. So we, like, we're going to be in an early stages of this arrangement and how they're managing and how they bring in Transpar. And so wouldn't, like, the opportunity, or it would be a very small window that Ride would then get rid of a project that they've just begun?
So phase one is part of their overall project. Speaking with Mario the other day, phase two was kind of, actually Mario and Patrick, Patrick from Transpar, in that bid, they kind of knew that some districts should be looking for the boundary piece and those other pieces. So they kind of included that as part of the bid because of that lower piece. But I can't imagine if you, if you push this too far out that I would believe, and Mr. Adams might know better than me, that some of those RFPs might expire. We might catch ourselves in a bad situation where then we have to go out to bid for all that. Then we're trying to craft the RFP individually. We're not getting economies of scale. So I, I think that would put us in a bad situation.
So wouldn't there be a way for us to, and I'm not sure when phase one is expected to be delivered to us and what the timeframe is and what we've locked in with that. But wouldn't there be a way for us to, at least knowing that the base one is there, putting some kind of language in there that we can then look at that and adding it at that time? And instead of doing a whole approval of everything now before we even see the deliverables?
Not sure exactly what you're referencing to, but any work that Transpar does as part of the state deal, any new company coming in would want to do that work over again because they're not going to want to pick up.
No, I agree. But what I'm saying is that we already have an agreement with Transpar. We already, we already have the first phase of that done, the 14,000 that we already agreed to with the pricing and that we approved. So when is the deliverable for that?
I believe that, and Transpar would know better than me, I think there, it's basically going to be throughout the year. I believe December, January, they might have some items for us, but I'm not totally sure exactly when that is. I know it's more of, that they're looking, that piece of it is not just for Cumberland. It's, it's more of a regional piece they're looking at too. So I would believe that they would look at throughout the year as well. So I think it's kind of a rolling piece where we would see something in December, January, but then we would also start to have stuff throughout the year as well until the spring and to the summer. I don't think it's just a one-time deliverable.
So doesn't, isn't that counterproductive, I'm so sorry, to what we had said about getting the bell times locked down and understanding and getting this study done before the end of this year, I thought, so that we would go into the next half of the school year without worrying about, like, going through the last minute.
Right. We would have something in the December timeframe, but they're going to continue to look at routes because there's also the regionalization piece. It's not just the Cumberland problem. It's a Lincoln piece. There's other pieces that they're going to be looking at.
Ms. Heather?
My, my understanding of all of this is how much risk we're, we're willing to to carry. And what we know is that, that it would cost us this money to do this study and that we would have some good deliverables on the redistricting, ready in time for and also in time to help parents and students and schools plan before, well ahead of the, the, you know, the 2027 year. So I believe, and this is personal, I believe that the amount of risk that we're taking by, you know, going with this is actually less than the risk we take by delay.
Anyone else? Motion? Yes. Is, is there one? Sorry. I'll, there's only discussion, no motion. Okay, so I'll, I'll, I will motion to approve it. Does anyone make a motion to approve? Sorry? Second? Okay, second, second by Ms. Shay. I think we should do a roll call vote. Ms. Shay has time here. Yay, and I vote yay. That passes six to one with Ms. Smith opposing. Next is discussion and a vote to approve resolutions. Ms. Smith?
Yes, as discussed, we have, oh gosh, I lost track of it, 11 resolutions on, for tonight. All of these 11 were discussed in fiscal subcommittee earlier this evening and did pass three to zero. We first have amended SC PR 07, 2025 dash 93. That one had been previously approved. And when the invoice went to go get paid, we realized that we had put the wrong number in. So we approved something that now needs to get reapproved. So we apologize for that error. And the remainder of them, SE PR 09, 2025 dash 114 through 123. Again, were also discussed in all of these past fiscal subcommittees, so I would move passage on all of them.
Ms. Smith moves passage on amended SC dash PR dash 07 dash 2025 dash 93 and SC dash PR dash 09 dash 2025 dash 114 through 123. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion or vote to approve payment of bills. Ms. Smith?
Yes, we have payments of bills this evening in the amount of 955,188.38. These were discussed in fiscal and it did, we did vote on approval, three to zero, so I would move passage on this as well.
Ms. Smith moves, makes motion to approve payment of bills in 955,100, 955,188.38. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Dr. Thon, do we need to go into executive session?
We do.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? By Ms. Goldstein, second by Mr. Bacon, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We adjourn at 8:22 PM. Have a great night.